On behalf of the Acton delegation, I want to welcome all of you to the junior high school here in Acton. We have 500 people in this room and a couple hundred or so more, I think, in an overflow room. So there's a lot of interest in the Green New Deal and a lot of interest in hearing from our U.S. Senator Ed Markey. So excited to invite you all here and welcome you here. For those of you who don't know, I am Tammy Govea. I am the state representative for the 14th Middlesex District. Thank you, thank you. I'm very proud to represent this area and really excited about the turnout that we have here to listen to our Senator Ed Markey. So there's a couple of things I want to share with you, some things that you may not know, which is that I have the distinct privilege and honor to sit in what was Senator Ed Markey's seat in the House chambers in the Massachusetts House of Representatives. And I'm here to tell you, even though it's a tough seat to fill, I'm working hard every single day to live up to the legacy of that specific seat. Like our senator, I have been fighting hard to ensure that all families in our Commonwealth have the things that they need to thrive. Earlier this year, I passed two pieces of legislation to address our opioid crisis and the fact that way too many of our friends, family, neighbors have been impacted in such devastating ways by the opioid crisis. A crisis that has been driven by greed and the lies of the pharmaceutical industry and the Sackler family. And coupled with the fear and loneliness that way too many of us as human beings experience in this state. We need a much more compassionate approach to addiction moving forward, and our senator has been on the front lines of this fight for us. I've also been living up to Senator Markey's legacy by fighting for bold measures to address our climate emergency. I filed legislation to address the role that carbon emissions play in our buildings and that buildings play in climate change. My net zero stretch energy code will require that all new construction and major renovations are net zero, and I'm proud to say that earlier -- thank you. And I'm proud to say that for many of you who know this already because you're in the town of Acton, but for those of you who are visiting from another city or town, that Acton will soon be breaking ground on a triple net zero elementary school this year. So we know that we need to have much more bold action and much less talk. We know that we need to take bold action on transportation because transportation contributes 40% to greenhouse gas emissions. And so I have been working with House colleagues in the Progressive Caucus, really taking a lead on identifying progressive ways to make sure that we're raising revenue to make the investments that we need in our public transit. Way too many of us are sitting in congested roadways and are abandoned by trains that break down. We need to get us out of our cars, onto public transit, and that means we need to be making big, bold, transformative investments in our public transit system. And I'm really proud of the work that I've been doing, leading the Progressive House Caucus on this issue. And I also spearheaded bringing together lawmakers, both on the Senate side and the House side, who represent the communities all up and down Route 2, from the Concord Rotary to Aewife. We know that the area around Aewife is among the most congested in the state. We know that we have tremendous safety issues when it comes to Aewife parking garage and even traveling along Route 2. We know that so many of us cannot get onto public transit for a variety of reasons. So I've been leading an effort with colleagues to advocate with House leadership and with other colleagues in the Massachusetts House of Representatives to ensure that we are making the investments we need for the residents of the districts all up and down Route 2 and Aewife. Really been proud of that work. And what I'm really proud of is that I have colleagues in the national level that I can call on when I need them. I can call on Senator Warren, I can call on Senator Markey, and I can call on Congresswoman Trahan. We are so very lucky to have the representation that we have up at the national level because I know when I need more muscle, when I need more counsel for our constituents, and when I need more of their support and advocacy, I have true partners and folks up at the national level. So we have two of my House colleagues here who would like to say a few words about Senator Markey, so I'd first like to invite Ken Gordon up to say a few words. Ken?
Thank you very much, Representative, and thank you for welcoming me to Acton. I represent the 21st Middlesex District, which is Bedford, where I live, Burlington, and a portion of Wilmington. We are at a period of national and international crisis with respect to climate challenges. I think that we all know that, and that's why you're all here. And we have a wonderful opportunity to hear from the leader in the Senate, one of the most important leaders in the Senate, Senator Ed Markey, who I am so proud represents us in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts with such leadership and such focus that he brings our Massachusetts values to the federal government, to the Senate. I'm proud of the job that he's doing. You know, I'm looking at, as many of us are, you know, we're looking at more efficient ways of obtaining transportation. And many of us have looked at the EV, the electronic vehicle options that we have, and the technology has improved so greatly as a choice for us. I think some of you may know this, but in Massachusetts, in the State House, the governor just signed a bill that will extend the credits, the $2,500 credit for EV into 2020. That was a legislative initiative that he signed on to, and we're partners in that, and that again reflects our values. Well, you also may know that the federal government ended the $7,500 EV credit at the end of 2019. Senator Markey is standing up for our values. He's standing up for the extension of that credit, and he's standing up for the Green New Deal, and he's standing up for other climate control initiatives. Again, that's why I'm so proud to have his voice for us in Massachusetts, in the Senate. He's so important. In my district, we have Hanscom Air Force Base. He understands the challenges at Hanscom. He listens, he's here, he's available. We have a VA hospital. He's here and he listens. He is an extremely important federal partner as we represent the people and the challenges of Massachusetts. So Representative Govea, thank you very much for including me. Folks, I'm looking forward to joining you and hearing everything that Senator Markey has to say tonight. Thank you.
And now I'd like to introduce Carmen Gentile, another state representative, to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Tammy. My name is Carmen Gentile. I represent the 13th Middlesex District, which includes Sudbury, Wayland, a portion of Marlborough, and a portion of Framingham. And very glad to be with you here this evening. I've known Senator Markey for many years, and we're very fortunate in Massachusetts to have two outstanding United States Senators. No question, the greatest issue confronting us today is climate change. And Senator Markey is the leader in the United States Senate with the Green New Deal and pushing back against climate change. So I'm so glad to be with you all tonight. I'm looking forward to hearing the Senator. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Carmen. Carmen, I think they want you to -- okay, they want you to stay up here, Carmen. We're new to this, folks. We didn't have our dress rehearsal. So I also have the distinct honor and privilege of serving with Senator Jamie Eldridge, a very good friend of mine. I know he's no stranger to most of you in this room, probably all of you in this room, but he's been a social justice advocate his whole career. He's been fighting for criminal justice reform, fighting for bold climate action and progressive policies. Whatever policy you think of, he's on it. He files more legislation than I think anybody else in the whole building, and that's really to his credit, to his staff, and to him, and just the ways that he thinks about the issues that we're facing. And I agree with what both of the fellow representatives of mine said, you know, climate is going to be the main -- continues to be the major issue we'll be facing. I was having a conversation with family over the weekend, and we were talking about, you know, what are the issues that define a decade? We were having a conversation that what's probably going to define 2020 is climate change, and that that's really going to be such a major focus, and we really need to pull together, stop talking and start acting. We know we have Senator Ed Markey in that fight for us. We also have Senator Jamie Eldridge, who I'd like to invite up here to say a few words as well.
This is an amazing turnout. Please give yourselves a big round of applause. If it hasn't been mentioned yet, there are now 500 people here in the auditorium and over 300 people in the overflow room. That is an amazing turnout for a Sunday night. Thank you so much for coming. So I want to first just thank Representative Tammy Govea for her very kind words and very proud to serve Acton together with her. And for those who don't know it, I represent 14 communities in Middlesex and Worcester District. I know that I grew up in Acton but live in Acton, but this is the junior high school that I went to. So thanks so much for coming. It's wonderful to be here with Representative Carmen Gentile and Representative Ken Gordon. We have served together for many, many years, fighting the progressive cause in the legislature, and very proud of the accomplishments we've made this session, but obviously there's so much more to be done. Before I have the opportunity to introduce Congresswoman Trahan, I do just have an announcement is that there is a car blocking an emergency lane out front, and it's the Toyota Prius. I'll give Congresswoman Trahan, as she reminded me, that would be a good line to say, but it is a Toyota Prius. 5 SF 159 Massachusetts Place. So we've been working together very closely in the legislature on so many issues, and I just want to emphasize, and I was just talking to Senator Markey about this, is that the Massachusetts State Senate, following what the House of Representatives passed late last year, is that the Senate will be taking up a bold climate change bill this month in January. So I had a chance to talk to a lot of folks before the formal program began. I really appreciate all your activism and advocacy. I know that Tammy talked about some of the bills that she's filed. I have filed bills around 100% renewable energy, around solar equity, around environmental justice. We need to make sure this is the boldest climate change bill in the entire country. Let's get that done. Please reach out to your state representative, state senator. So before I introduce Congresswoman Trahan, I just want to echo what my colleagues have said about Senator Ed Markey. And as someone that now is in my ninth term as a legislator, I really want to emphasize how much Senator Markey has been a mentor to so many elected officials. And quite honestly, that doesn't always happen between the national and the state, but Senator Markey has been someone that has been incredibly helpful. You've heard, of course, about his leadership and the Green New Deal. Hopefully you know that he was the one who passed legislation to make consumer products more energy efficient, to make sure that our cars and our trucks are more energy efficient, and that he has also led the effort to combat the natural gas, use of natural gas throughout the country. And he's been a great ally in what we've been doing here at the state level to seal and solve and enclose gas leaks. So he's been an incredible leader on that, where he's done report after report that it's informed state government about how to take action to move away from fossil fuels, heating our homes, empowering our cars, and investing in our economy. So he's been an incredible mentor for me on gas leaks legislation, renewable energy, and someone that has really emphasized the need for us to take bold action, but also that it's intersectional. It's not just about a clean economy, it's also about making sure that everyone benefits from the solar economy, making sure that those who are less well off are not left behind as we're moving and transitioning to 100% clean energy future. So I'm really grateful for him to come here to Acton as part of the Green New Deal Town Hall meeting. You have an equally strong and equally bold Congresswoman in this region, and I'm very proud to share most of the communities I represent with Congresswoman Trahan. And when we're talking about the Green New Deal, it's so critical to remind us what we're talking about here. We're talking about clean air, we're talking about clean water, we're talking about making sure we all have a good quality of light and that our health is protected. Well, just over the past year, in her first year, in her first term as Congresswoman, I've had the pleasure to work very closely with Congresswoman Trahan. We went out to Devon's, the former military base that we both represent, and we toured net zero energy buildings. How do we make sure that we get a net zero energy building code, the kind of legislation that Tammy has filed? How do we make sure to take leadership at the national level? She has secured millions of dollars to help clean up PFAS. I know that many of the communities that people live, looking out that you're living in, that have PFAS in your water systems, she's secured millions of dollars to work to clean up PFAS, especially in the Devon's, Ayr, Shirley area. She's been a fighter for that, to make sure that the federal government plays a critical role. And just recently, and hopefully you saw the news story, that she and Congresswoman Clark secured funding in the appropriations bill to provide $200,000 for the Concord Aspit-Sudbury River System, which flows through the Acton Concord area. So good. The state legislative delegation has worked hard to secure state funding, but I can't remember in recent memory federal funding going to clean up our river system. So that's really incredible leadership that she has already shown. So I hope you realize that just as you have an incredible ally on environmental and energy issues with Senator Markey, you also have equal a strong leader as Congresswoman Lori Trahan, and so I'd like her to come up to introduce Senator Ed Markey. Thank you.
Good evening. I want to thank Jamie and Tammy, Carmen and Ken for your courageous leadership at the State House. You know, we're so fortunate to have you pushing Massachusetts policies on climate and gun safety, on education, on healthcare, frankly, for the rest of the country to model and to follow. So over the past 12 months, I've had the great privilege of working with Senator Markey on a number of issues that are of great interest to the people in this room, the people of the 3rd Congressional District, but also to the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts. In fact, even before I was sworn in, just a year ago, Senator Markey invited me, graciously invited me, to participate in a pipeline safety field hearing in Morans. He had quickly organized it in the aftermath of the Merriam-Ann Valley gas explosions to get to the bottom of that tragedy. And then he helped me by putting his head together with mine on what legislation we could craft to prevent that disaster from ever happening again. And that work continues today as a result of his impeccable leadership in the Senate. Senator Markey and I are working on legislation to end the scourge of opioid addiction by ensuring that doctors identify substance use disorders, they offer and provide treatment to their patients, and they offer patients non-opioid therapies for pain. We're pushing to end the threat of gun violence by demanding the nation raise its gun safety standards to the levels that we have here in the Commonwealth. And I was pleased to join him in successfully pushing for federal funding of gun violence research, finally, I know. We're also fighting to protect communities, as Senator Eldridge mentioned, from harmful chemicals in our water supply, such as PFAS. These so-called forever chemicals have been detected in Ayr, and Hudson, and Stowe, and elsewhere, but we're going to get PFAS out of our water, and we're going to protect our rivers and our drinking water for generations. So speaking of clean water, the very first bill I was introduced was to protect the Nashua River, much like we did the Sudbury, Concord, and Assavet rivers. It was actually a bill that Senator Markey, together with my predecessor, Congresswoman Nikki Sangis, had originally drafted together, and I was proud that we were able to get it signed into law earlier last year. I can't tell you how personally pleased I am by the fact that the President also recently signed into law the Senator's bill to end abuse of robocalls. It is finally safe for us to enter our homes again. But tonight, it is my pleasure to join you as a member of the Green New Deal revolution that our Senator is leading. The Green New Deal is about nothing less than ensuring the survival of humankind and all species on our planet. There's no Planet B. The Green New Deal is the bold response that we must have to prevent that growing climate, to prevent the growing climate catastrophe. We've only just begun to get a glimpse of how incredibly dangerous climate change is and will continue to be unless we act now. Just look at Australia tonight, or the fact that wildfires are commonplace across the western part of our country. Scientists are predicting that climate change will drench New Englanders with 100-year floods every single year. And according to NOAA data, in eight of the last 10 years, weather-related disasters cost us in excess of $200 billion. In four of those years, the price tag exceeded $300 billion. You know, for that amount of money, we could purchase solar panels for one out of every three single-family homes in our country. Meanwhile, the past six years have been among the hottest on record. We need to address the climate crisis now. There is no more time for us to wait. The Green New -- The Green New Deal lays out an ambitious agenda for the United States to make the transition to clean renewable energy within 10 years. I'm proud of the work Senator Markey has done to bring this issue to the forefront, and I'm pleased to be an original co-sponsor of his resolution. But it's been particularly inspiring to see so many young people organized to defend their futures and our planet. By demanding change, they've helped reignite a debate in our nation's capital. And until recently, frankly, the Senator was one of a few lonely voices speaking out about climate change in recent years. I'll close with a note of appreciation for this community in particular. One of the things that's impressed me most is the determination of the American people to continue forward with the Paris Agreement in the face of an administration that wants out. Acton is one of about 300 communities in our nation that is part of the "We Are Still In" movement. You refuse to quit, and that is the kind of persistence and toughness that we need now more than ever. So thank you to all of you, especially the person who drove the Prius. You get like a pass for bargaining in the wrong spot. But fact is, we do not have any more time. I don't have to tell anybody in this room that you're here on a Sunday night. This moment demands aggressive action, and the Green New Deal is the blueprint. So with that, it's my honor to turn the microphone over to the author of the Green New Deal. Please welcome Senator Ed Markey.
Thank you for being here, and thank you to Lori Trahan, who was a warrior for the Green New Deal in the House of Representatives, just doing such a great job, wearing her best green dress tonight. But I partnered with her on, you know, dealing with the natural gas explosion in Lawrence and not Anover and Anover, just further evidence of why we should just be moving to cleaner, safer energy across the country in the future. I'm partnering with her as well to save the Lowell Spinners and make sure they don't lose. Thank you for the fantastic job which you do. To Jamie Eldridge, he is up in the Massachusetts State Senate. He is an iconic leader on all of the clean energy issues. Tammy Govea plays the same role over in the House of Representatives, and I thank them for their friendship and all of the work which they do. To Carmen and Ken Gordon, thank you for being here. Thank you for all your leadership in the House, for just being up and fighting and making sure that everyone's voices are heard. We also have with us Concord Select Board members Jane Hotchkiss and Terry Ackerman. Thank you for being here. Concord Kyleisle School Committee members Cynthia Rainey and Wally Johnson, the Acton Town Manager is here, John Manjirati, thank you for being here. And by the way, was Ashley in her singing of the National Anthem not a perfect example of why Donald Trump is wrong in trying to eliminate the national endowments of the odds and humanities? Please stand up. So why don't I just get this out of the way? I'll just start with this. We have two eyes which are coming up this week in the United States Senate. Number one, impeachment. And what I am going to do, and what we Democratic Senators are committed to doing, is ensuring that Mitch McConnell cannot stonewall our requests, or witnesses cannot stonewall our request for documents. A real trial, a fair trial on the floor of the United States Senate. Mitch McConnell has already made a mockery out of the process by saying that he considers himself to be part of Donald Trump's defense team. But we are going to hold on this issue, and the Democrats are not looking for left-wing witnesses to be testifying. What we're looking for is for the President's right-wing Republicans to testify. We want to hear from Mick Malvani, we want to hear from John Bolton, we want to hear from the people at OMB who were instructed to put a hold on the $380 million of American funding for the Ukraine government unless they engage in an investigation of Joe Biden's son. We just want them to tell us what happened. We just want all the President's men to tell us what did the President know that one did not know. We're going to hold on that. And the second eye is Iran. And it's pretty clear that the President, between rounds of golf in Mar-a-Lago, decided to set the United States of America off on a very dangerous course. And a course which could ultimately lead to a catastrophic war in the Middle East with Iran that would be dangerous for our troops, it would be dangerous for our civilians over there, but it ultimately could come back, like Mohammed Atta and the other nine that hijacked two planes from Logan, like the Sinai brothers, it could come back here. And we have a constitutional responsibility as the Senate and the House to ensure that we have a debate on whether or not we should have a war with Iran, whether or not the President actually had any evidence of an imminent threat to the security of our country, that he understood what the consequences were, that Iran will reconstitute its nuclear weapons program, something very dangerous to our national security, that the Iraqi parliament would call for the United States to leave Iraq, which is calling for jubilation in the ISIS community. So we know that the President could potentially just tweet by tweet have us slip into a conflict. And I will tell you this, and I promise you this, I'm going to fight every single day from the minute I get back down there to make sure that we do not have a war against Iran. (applause). So, now, let's move to the Green New Deal. So, it was one year ago, and I called Congresswoman Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez. And I invited her to have lunch with me. And so we had a two-hour lunch, talking about climate change, talking about what the solutions could be, talking about the way in which we could construct a campaign in our country to finally convince people that this had an urgency to it that could not be avoided. And so our two staffs negotiated for about a month over what the language would be. And then 11 months ago, and that's all it is, 11 months ago, we introduced the Green New Deal in the House and into the Senate. And nothing has been the same since then. Because now, climate has catapulted up to the very top of the list of concerns, not just of young people, not just of millennials, but of voters across the country. And unlike 2016, when not one reporter asked Donald Trump or Hillary Clinton a question about climate change, the Green New Deal has solved that problem. Because in every one of our presidential debates, every time there's not a discussion about any aspect of clean energy, the question of the Green New Deal comes up. Climate change is now up there, at the very top. It used to be an issue that was, people cared about it, but it was only like 13 or 14 in terms of intensity of interest. Nobody. And we've unleashed this group of young people across the country, the Sunrise Movement, which has injected itself into the political process, demanding that all the generations do something about this issue, put solutions in place. And that's exciting, and I love partnering with Sunrise, I love partnering with Alexandria. About two months ago, I had Greta come in to address the Democratic senators. I just sit across from us. And she just said to us, "Get it done. Get it done." You know, and she speaks for a whole generation, you know, "Just get this done. Fight harder. Work harder. Work hard." And it was great just to hear it, and I wanted the other senators to hear it as well. Because it's Greta, it's Sunrise, it's Alexandria, it's this army of activists that has now joined with an already existing army that's been there, but in the minority. And that's the people who are in this room and all across the country, who have the reinforcements coming over the hill, right, with all these young people to really turn it into a voting issue in 2020. So, Australia. Australia, right now, I checked this with my staff, Australia right now is 10 times worse than the California fires of 2018 and 19. 10 times worse, and it's the beginning of the fire season in Australia. Their government has been in denial, their government is in the pocket of the coal industry in Australia. The consequences are now pretty palpable for the people in that country. What happens if you just ignore the obvious warnings that are coming from our scientists? And I don't know if you saw this on TV in the last couple of days, the fires are actually creating clouds that are now creating, they're called pyrocumulus clouds, that are now creating their own tornadoes and thunderstorms out of the clouds that are being created from the fire. It's like the beginning of the horror movie, huh? Like, can that really happen? And it is, right now. And it's a preview of coming attractions for the United States of America if we don't leave, if we don't put solutions in place. So what Alexandria and I did was, we pretty much wrote the resolution into three parts. It's only 14 pages long. I recommend that you read it. In 2009, I was able to put in place with Henry Waxman from California, a 1,400-page bill which passed in the House of Representatives that would have reduced greenhouse gases by 80% by the year 2050. And it passed. And it's the Waxman-Markey bill. And then Mitchell McConnell killed it in the Senate and kind of stalled out at 55 votes. They needed assistance. But we would already be 10 years into the deployment of the technologies if that had passed. So this time, what I decided was that I don't need a 1,400-page bill. I know how to do that. I know how to get into all the very detail on every one of the sub-... We need a 14-page non-binding resolution that signs the alarm and makes it very clear that this problem exists and it has a solution and the way in which we're going to do it. So part number one really deals with the fact that the United Nations in November of 2018 said that climate change is now a direct existential threat to the planet. The words of the United Nations. And that we only had until 2030 to begin to put in place the kinds of protections that were necessary. In the same month, in December of 2018, all 13 federal agencies, which are mandated to issue a report on climate change every four years pursuant to a 1990 law, issued their report, and they decided that they would focus just on the impacts on the United States of America. And all of these 13 agencies work, obviously, for Donald Trump. It's November of 2018, but by law, they have to reach the conclusion. So this is NOAA, it's NASA, it's Department of Energy, it's EPA, it's 13 agencies. What did they conclude? Well, they concluded that, and it's in the report, that Massachusetts itself will see a warming of 7 degrees Fahrenheit by the year 2180, 80 years from now, if we continue with business as usual. 7 degrees Fahrenheit warmer on average. And that sea level could go up 10 feet. And for us, that would be the Greenland ice mass, like a giant ice cube just going into the ocean right along the East Coast. What does that ice mass will? It's about 1,000 miles long, it's about 300 miles wide, and it's a mile high, like 10 Empire State Villas high for most of this area, and in some areas, it's 2 miles, 3 miles deep. So that goes into the ocean like any ice cube that would go into an already full glass of water. That's going to cause problems for us and for the rest of the planet. And Antarctica is in the same situation. So that's the conclusion of our own scientists, not some crazy international United Nations group, you know, looking for global control of the agenda. These are our own scientists who were tasked to come to this conclusion, which they did. Sitting in the Oval Office, of course, is the denier chief. He doesn't understand that Mar-a-Lago could become Mar-a-Lagoon by 2030, but he doesn't care because he could protect himself. He doesn't care about other people. He cares about only himself. So that was the science. Part two, we talk about what the solution is. And so what we call for is this massive effort to ensure that we move to 100% clean energy technologies. And then we make it an urgent trial, and that we unleash this revolution in a way that then allows us in the United States to become the leaders in the world, not the laggers. This is after, of course, Donald Trump has pulled us out of the Paris Agreement, where our moral authority collapsed once we withdrew. Although I will say this parenthetically, it takes two years to pull out of the Paris Agreement, and it only becomes official, believe it or not, on the day after the election in 2020. That's the notice. So not only is Donald Trump's name on the ballot, but so is the climate change on that day of November this year. And our new president, if we elect him, you know, will announce that they're going to resubmit for entry. So the challenge becomes, how do you do this? How do you deploy all the technologies? So the third part of the Green New Deal calls for this to be done with intersectionality, with frontline communities involved, ensuring that unlike the first New Deal, where southern racist senators and congressmen insisted that sharecroppers who were black not be covered by Social Security, domestic workers who are largely minorities not be covered by many of these social programs, that this time, we're going to do it right. Right up front, we're just going to state that we want to make sure that this is done in a way that's all-inclusive, and that we put in place the kinds of programs that guarantee that everyone is a part of this solution. And so, and we also put in there, by the way, what we did was, we took Franklin Delano Roosevelt's 1944 State of the Union address. And in his State of the Union address, he actually says, pretty much, "We're probably going to win this war. And we're going to have 11 million people coming home who have won this war for us." So we need a second Bill of Rights, he called it, it's his second Bill of Rights, another address, January of 1944. And then he says, "The first Bill of Rights is very important. We want to keep it. We need a second Bill of Rights for these 11 million people, for our country." Everyone's entitled to healthcare. Everyone's entitled to a job. Everyone's entitled to an education, up to their God-given ability. Everyone's entitled to a vacation, actually puts it in, a paid vacation. So we put that into the Green New Deal. Franklin Delano Roosevelt's 1944 State of the Union address. So that's what they pounce on. Fox, ah, socialism, ah, healthcare for everyone, education for everyone, vacations for everyone, socialism. That's what the Green New Deal is. So we turned and we said to them, "What? What do you call 100 years of tax breaks for the oil, gas, and coal industry?" That looks like socialism to me, where ordinary families subsidize the wealthiest industries in our American history, and all we want is some of that socialism for wind and solar and all electric vehicles and battery and storage technologies and all-electric vehicles, and we will bury the fossil fuel industry within 10 years. So, that's the, you know, that's the reality. And I'm an optimist by nature, so I'll give you a few numbers. 2008, in the United States, pick a number in your mind, how many total megawatts of solar were in our country? You're wrong. It was a total of 2,000 megawatts. That's it. But we started to put some tax breaks on the books. States started to pass renewable electricity standards. So by the end of 2018, we were up to 67,000 megawatts. It wasn't like the sun got warmer, you know, all of a sudden. It's that the policies, tax and regulatory, started to move investments in the right direction. For wind in 2018, I'm sorry, in 2008, there was a grand total of 25,000 megawatts from the beginning of time up until 2008. By the end of 2018, it was up to 100,000 megawatts. So we quadrupled in those four years, and it didn't get any windier in the country. On all-electric vehicles, in 2008, pick a number in your brain, how many total all-electric vehicles were in the United States? No, you're wrong. Answer is 2,500. That's all we had, the whole country in 2008, okay? But we started to put tax breaks on the books. We started to create some incentives, probably. We increased the fuel economy standards of the vehicles so that the standards got higher and higher, where you would have to move off of the internal combustion engine. So we now are up to 1 million that are on the streets. But you can see in each instance, there's a kind of a Moore's Law with each one of these things, okay, where there's a hockey stick that says that if you put those incentives in place, that the technologies become more efficient, more cost-effective, and the consumers move to them. But you have to have some incentives on the books for a period of time that kind of matches the 100-year lead which the oil, gas, and coal industry have had. But if we do it, we'll see this revolution. Now, here's the good news. In 2019 and 2020 combined, these are crazy numbers, this is how much solar and wind are going to be deployed, we're going to see 60,000 new megawatts of wind and solar deployed just in two years. Now, the Republicans in the Trump administration, they're trying to take all these tax breaks off the books. No extension of the tax breaks for all electric vehicles, for wind, for solar, that's their call, right? And don't even put a tax break on the books for storage technologies. Don't even put it on the books, which is something I'm passionate about, that we create that kind of a set of incentives. Because we know that if you have wind and solar plus storage, well, goodbye, coal. Goodbye, natural gas. Now, we're in business, and this technology will have a telescope timeframe to just completely revolutionize our relationship with electricity. And as a result, the plugging in of vehicles in our country, because they'll be plugging in to the renewable energy that's in the storage capacity of each home and business all across the country. So we know this can all happen. This is not, you know, sometimes you use the analogy of putting a mission to the moon, returning it back through heat, you know, 20 times the power of the sun and doing so with metal and other technologies that have never been invented. This is not that, this is not rocket science. This is like auto mechanics, okay? This is just, if we just put in place technologies that already exist, or just need improvement that comes from the mass deployment of them, we can get this done. Now, how do I know that's possible? Well, one thing that really ticked me off is chairman of the telecommunications committee back in the 1990s, I was the chairman, was that we didn't have these cell phone technologies. So I moved over 200 megahertz for the third, fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh cellphone technology, 1993. But we prohibited the two incumbents from bidding because it costs 50 cents a minute, it was analog, and you didn't have one. Go and Gecko had one in Wall Street, one of these big phones you had to carry around in your briefcase. So by 1995, after I did that and prohibited the first two companies from bidding for the spectrum, you had one of these in your pocket. That's the year you got it, like 1995 or 1996, right? Because five new companies got in, and guess what? The first two incumbents, they went to this technology immediately themselves. But within 10 years, a very smart guy came up with this idea, a computer in your pocket that's as powerful as the computer on the Apollo mission, huh? And now, this isn't just in our pockets, it's in the hands of 500 million people in Africa. It's transforming that continent and the whole rest of the world. Why? Because we led. Why? Because we broke down the barriers which the utilities had created through the introduction of these new technologies. You know, they don't stay awake at night saying, "Oh, my goodness, how can we make it easier for people to kind of get around this traditional telecommunications system?" Any more than the utilities say, "How can we make it possible for people to have wind and solar, you know, distributed energy that they can use that gets around this traditional edifice complex which utilities have, that can only have 500, 1,000 megawatt?" You like that joke? Thank you. But, you know, that we're used to. And so how much has this transformed us in just a brief period of time? I mean, I can, looking at 10 people out there right now who are looking down at and not even looking at me, okay? So I'm proud of this. I'm proud of this. I mean, I think we're going to reach a day when no one ever looks up again to talk to anyone, just be looking down. But we know we can do it, we just did it. And by the way, the same young people who did this want to do the next revolution, the clean energy revolution. They know they can do it. And by the way, it's moved so quickly that in Massachusetts, it's now the clean energy it's now the clean energy sector in the top 10 employers in the state of Massachusetts, okay? That's how it's going to move, right? So from my perspective, uh, this 2020 election is a referendum on this issue. This is it. If Donald Trump gets re-elected, it's the equivalent of a death sentence for the planet. Because China will sit on the sidelines, India will sit on the sidelines, and we will be loading the dice in the atmosphere for consequences that the next generation will pay for in a way that's almost unimaginable. But looking at Australia, you can kind of get an idea of what's heading their way. So from my perspective, we have to be the leaders. We're Massachusetts. We're the Bay state, but we're also the brain state, huh? And we're aware of what the consequences are. Now, Massachusetts, uh, it's the Gulf of Maine. We call it Boston Harbor, Rossa Harbor, New Bedford Harbor. But the Gulf of Maine is its technical term. Well, the Gulf of Maine is the second fastest warming body of water on the planet. The Gulf of Maine is the second fastest warming body of water on the planet. So you've got these crazy weather patterns now. We have a tornado going through three communities on Cape Cod, or a tornado two years ago whipped through the middle of downtown Revere down Broadway in Revere, a tornado. We know that it's not just global warming, it's global weirding which is taking place, huh? We know this is happening. And we also know that we have the capacity to solve this problem and like we did with these technologies, to make sure that the technologies get distributed around the planet. So this is the historic turning point right now. I'm the author of the 2007 law. I used to make the amendment each year on the House floor to increase fuel economy standards, increase fuel economy standards, increase fuel economy standards. They had not been increased since 1975. So in 2001, I lost. 2003, I lost. 2005, I lost. And in 2007, when we won the House, Nancy Pelosi named me the chairman of the global, uh, of the Climate Change Committee. So my first act was to pass the legislation to increase fuel economy standards. And Barack Obama... And since we put 70% of the oil we consume into gasoline tanks, that's no small area. So Barack Obama used that authority and the California Clean Air Act authority, my law and that, to increase fuel economy standards to 54.5 miles per gallon by the year 2025. So what is Donald Trump doing now? Donald Trump, pursuant to the oil industry, is just ordering his agencies to roll back those standards. That it's not 54, or 52, or 50, or 49, or 48, or 47. Just the old ESPN will stay right where they are, you know, on the momentum from the Obama era, maybe around 38 miles per gallon. Well, that's not going to do it. We shouldn't be talking about 54 miles per gallon. We should be now talking about, how do we get to 64? How do we get to 74? What are those deadlines in the years? Because then, young people have the incentive to go and invent, to improve the battery technologies, to improve the metals that are going to be used, to, to, to create, and we, as a society, to, for us, to create the tax and regulatory environment whereby all of this would happen, huh? So Trump is directly going at my law. I mean, directly going at this fuel economy law. And I've also, I'm also the author of the 1987 Appliance Efficiency Law. And, um, and that just requires the Department of Energy to just continue to go in and increase the efficiency of the air conditioning and heating and refrigeration because that, that's all power plants are. It's just the demand that each of these technologies place on it. And the fewer you need, the, the, the less amount of electricity you need is the less amount of coal you need, the less amount of oil that you need. I mean, it's just pretty simple, right? My mother always said, "Eddie, you have to learn how to work smarter, not harder," you know? And she would always say that after she said, "Eddie, your father and I are going to donate your brain to Harvard Medical School as a completely unused human organ," right? So, so energy efficiency is just working smarter, not harder, you know? Make the vehicles more efficient. Make the lighting more efficient. Make the, you know, make the refrigeration, the air conditioning. In Texas, in the summer, 80% of peak demand for electricity is air conditioning. Well, just double the efficiency of the air conditioners in America, huh? How hard is that? That's not putting a man on the moon. That's just mandated, you know? That you have to work smarter, not harder, and reduce the amount of coal. Reduce the amount of other fossil fuels that we're using, including natural gas. So I'm going to just stop right there and, uh, and ask Senator Eldridge to come out and Representative Guevara if they would come out. And we can have a little bit, we've asked people to fill out their cards, asking questions. And perhaps we could moderate that. And, uh, and so I'll just begin, uh, you know, by asking Senator Eldridge to come on.
Thank you so much. Again, it's my honor to be on the stage with you, as it is with Representative Guevara. Tammy and I are going to be serving as the moderators tonight. And so we're looking forward, obviously, to, from hearing as many people as possible. And so what we're going to do is, we're going to call up a few names. So when you hear your name, come up, line up at one of the microphones over here and ask the question that you submitted. And really emphasize to ask the question that you submitted and, 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 uh, see. If you're unable to stand at the mic, please raise your hand.
I try not to have any of the questions come with the phone, Tammy.
We experienced that too, Senator. If you're unable to stand at the mic, please raise your hand. Your staff will come with a microphone for you. And if you're in the overflow room, please join us in the auditorium where we call your names. So come into the auditorium if you call your name in the overflow room. So let's begin.
Great. So you have a way to answer questions. So the first three people come on down. Susan Eppé from Acton. Karen, uh, it's hard to fully read it. Fazari from Stowe. And Selena Chandra from Acton. So Selena, Karen from Stowe, and Susan Eppé from Acton. Excellent.
Great. So please ask your question. If you could identify yourself and answer your question.
Hello, my name is Susan Eppé.
Can you move in a little bit closer?
And I live in South Acton. And this is a town that has a very large Chinese and Indian population, which we're very proud of, our diversity here. However, I noticed there are very few Asian Americans or Indian Americans here. And my question is, why do you think that is? And what can the Democratic Party do to get more Asians and Indians involved?
Okay, and that is an excellent question. And there is, without question, a burden on us to ensure that we involve the Asian community in the United States more fully in our political process. They're very successful. They, they do very well, going through our educational system and then going out and prospering. But we need them in our political process more. And to the extent to which they come from countries that are also central to the solving of this problem, it would be great to have them there, uh, at the, in the front rows and working on these issues. So that's a big, I think, challenge for the Democratic Party especially, that we reach out into those communities more. And I think that you've given me a good assignment for, uh, for this election cycle, for me to try to find ways in which we actually have gatherings of the Asian-American community on these issues. Because I will tell you one thing, they're actually starting up country, uh, companies in the clean energy sector. I know that because they come in to visit me in my office. So it's an excellent point and, uh, and a challenge bar. So it's, it's kind of not too different from what, what we're talking about with the Green New Deal. We have young people in now and fully active. But we have to find all parts of the society because in a way, they understand better than anyone what would happen in China or India, much less the United States, if we were to attack them. But thank you so much for your excellent question. Another question to our right.
Hi, I'm Karen Fazari from Stowe. I just recently moved up from Connecticut, so my first town hall here. My question has to do with, how is the current president able to just continually roll back the environmental protections that you and others have taken years to put into place in the first place? Without any involvement from Congress?
Unfortunately, the president has named a coal lobbyist to be the head of the EPA, and the Republicans in the Senate have confirmed him. He's named an oil lobbyist to be the head of the Department of Interior, and the Republicans in the Senate with 51 votes have confirmed him. He's named, uh, an oil lobbyist to run the Department of Energy, and with 51 votes, the Republicans have confirmed him. So that's where we are right now. It's almost the world upside down. Bill Ruckel's house just passed away, great head of the EPA. Nixon era, that Republican Party is gone. This is a Republican Party of ExxonMobil. This is an ExxonMobil, uh, uh, party of the co-pros, of the coal industry. And so unfortunately, these regulatory, uh, agencies can almost immediately say, "We're not going to continue to implement the rules. In fact, we're going to challenge the rules and resubmit all the rules." So am I happy? Not at all that NHTSA, uh, the agency in charge of the fuel economy standards, and them being said, that they're in the forefront of the effort to roll them back, you know, to allow for a wide range of, of latitude for the auto industry to meet the standard. So we need a Democratic president. We need someone who will name, who will name on January 21st, 2021, once she is sworn in, uh, the, the, um... The heads of these agencies that will promulgate regulations. So what they've done is, and, you know, Gina McCarthy is from Massachusetts. By the way, Ernie Moniz was from Massachusetts. John Kerry was from Massachusetts. John Holdren was from Massachusetts. A big part of all of these rules that went on the books came from appointees that all came out of Massachusetts. But Gina McCarthy promulgated the Clean Power Plan. And that was something that said that all utilities by the year 2031 had to reduce their greenhouse gases by 32% across the whole country. So she promulgated the Clean Power Plan, got it, uh, passed, and then immediately after Trump got elected, he just withdrew it, you know? And then forces us to go to court. And across the board, and this is to the credit of the NRDC, of the Sierra Club, of agent, of, of nonprofits all across the country, they now have hired hundreds of lawyers to take the Trump administration to court on each and every one of these regulations. And many of them are right now still in place because the courts have put a hold on their removal. So that's why this final 11 months of this year is so important because we have used the courts to delay the, the implementation of their goals of withdrawing them totally. But time is of the essence because ultimately, the president's goal is to have five Supreme Court justices who are just rubber stamps, you know, for upholding anything and everything that comes up and out of, uh, the regulatory agencies in our country. So, yes, I'm sorry.
But if the regulations can just be turned over, don't we need laws, right, that require Congress?
Okay, good. Excellent, excellent. So, so, yeah, he, I'll tell you, it's a maya maxima culpa for any of you who are alt-boys, but, um, the, uh, the, uh... We assumed, can I say this? We assumed that Donald Trump couldn't win. We assumed that Hillary Clinton couldn't lose. We assumed that even when those regulations were being promulgated, we didn't have to legislate them as well. That would have been Belt and Suspenders. We didn't have to do it, you know? Because that guy would never win. And so, of course, the worst-case scenario has unfolded, all right? So if we could all go back when we controlled the House, the Senate, and the presidency, we would take out a lot of these regulations, dust them off, get them passed so that they're actually laws rather than regulations that were promulgated, you know, at the discretion of an agency, okay? Yeah, that's what we were doing retrospect. You know, there's an old saying that you live life forwards, but you understand it backwards. So I understand it now backwards, right? More clearly. So that'll be an imperative for us once we win the House, the Senate, and the presidency in the run of this year, that we make sure that we move more fully in that direction. So, so who was the next question here? Yes. What is her name?
I'm Selena Chandra, I live in Carthage Town here. My question is, what can kids do for me to get involved in what you're doing?
What can kids do? Okay, thank you. And, uh, and thank you for being a leader. So I would say, number one, join the Sunrise Movement. Participate in that. Organize around that in your school, in your town. You can organize your own Sunrise Movement, you know? Putting together young people, you know, who care about this issue. So I would say that's number one. Then I would say you can look around town and ask questions about whether or not there is enough solar deployment, whether their buildings are energy-efficient enough, whether or not they have a ban on plastic bags yet, huh? Because that's the oil industry. If you want to talk about ExxonMobil with a nice business model, I mean, that's the petroleum industry, okay? That's, that's what the plastic industry is. So, so you need leaders who are going to take it town by town, who will be, uh, who will be creating the momentum for the, uh, for the larger society to respond. But I would say, to be specific, I would say the Sunrise Movement. It's right here in Massachusetts, by the way. It's started by a young woman from East Boston, nationally, who went to UMass Amherst, okay? Barshini, Barshini, she's from Acton! There you go! There you go! So, so there it is. There's already a young woman from Acton who's leading. And so we'll plug you into that movement, okay? And, uh, thank you for asking, thank you for your leadership too. You're, you're going to save us, okay? Thank you. We're going to call four people to come up. Rob O'Neil from Westford. Ariam Dave from Lexington. Alex Chatfield from Lincoln. And Jim Sider Grant from Acton. Come on down. Yes, sir. Could you identify yourself?
I'm Rob O'Neil.
Can you lift up, lift up the microphone a little bit?
I'm Rob O'Neil from Westford.
Beautiful, thank you.
And, uh, so our firm actually is doing environmental permitting for the Vineyard Wind Project here, the offshore wind project in Massachusetts. So I guess my question is, can you perhaps update us on the extender package and the PTC and the legislation? I know that you're very involved in, what do you think about how offshore wind is going to continue to get tax breaks?
So you're helping in the permitting of the Vineyard Wind Project?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So here's where we are. Yesterday, I had this great honor. And in New Bedford, uh, once a year, they, at the New Bedford Whaling Museum, they do an entire reading of Moby Dick. That's what they do. And they asked me to get up in the beginning here and read like part of the introduction of Ishmael into, into, uh, things. So that's, that's the New Bedford, the Gloucester, the pilgrims coming, you know, over, all blown by the winds, you know, of the 17th and 18th century, huh? Well, those same winds make us, off of our coastline, the Saudi Arabia of winds for all the planet. We have the strongest winds on the planet, right off our own coastline. So towards that goal, and I've worked hard on this, we zoned the whole area off of our coastline coastline where, through the Department of Interior of the Obama administration, where businesses came with confidence, saying, "Well, we know that it's permitted out there." So Vineyard Wind is one of those projects, and the first phase of it, I think, was 600 megawatts. Am I right on that? Eight hundred megawatts? And eight hundred megawatts, well, if you did 1,000 megawatts, it would be like the equivalent of the pilgrim power plant. Okay? Think about how big that is, huh? So that was about to get permitted in July of 2019, when all of a sudden, this new oil lobbyist at the Department of Interior decided that he had questions about wind because of the environmental impacts that it could have, because we know Donald Trump believes that wind causes cancer amongst other things. And so, so, you know, so, so it's now delayed at least another year, and it's jeopardizing the tax break which they get. So the one thing that we worked, all right, so I'll tell you this little story. So what we were trying to do in this end-of-the-year budget deal that just was completed in December, we were trying to get an extension of the wind tax break out to 2025. We were trying to get an extension of the solar tax break out to 2025, 2025. We were trying to get a new storage tax break, be put on the books, and we were trying to get an extension of the electric vehicle tax break, you know, so that we could have a larger incentive for people. Well, the Republicans absolutely drew the line, and the only thing we got out of it was because the wind tax break was going to have expired on December 31st last week, would have been gone. Wind, solar actually goes out until 2021. So we were able to get a one-year extension, that is, all of 2020, up to a 60% tax break, although it's smaller offshore than it is for onshore, right? And so we're trying to keep it alive, stay it alive, as John Travolta might say. So we're trying to, trying to keep it alive, and that 800 megawatts, if we can get it out there, there's another 800 megawatts right behind it. And there's another 800 megawatts behind it, and another one behind it, and another one behind it, and another one behind it. And these can all be union jobs. These can all be blue-collar jobs. This can be the greatest blue-collar revolution in two generations in our country. We can save all of creation by engaging a massive job creation and have it be union, especially here in Massachusetts, where we can demand that they have project labor agreements that are attached to them, putting it out there. Well, New York, New York, and I've sent a letter, so the companies insisting that that be the case. But New York has now responded, and they want 10,000 megawatts out of New York. And Connecticut is responding, and it's going right down the East Coast. So you want to talk about an existential threat. Climate change is an existential threat to the United States and the planet. This renewables revolution is an existential threat, especially to the natural gas industry, which wants to bring in more pipelines and have a more natural gas power plants be constructed when we can just pull the wind off of the ocean, you know, that blew the pilgrims and the whalers our way, huh? And we can do this. So that's, that's on the ballot. That's, because one of the very first things we'll do as Democrats is to pass a wind and solar and battery and all-electric building tax breaks, okay? That's one of the very first things we'll do. And that'll, and then, and then we will name people to these agencies who actually believe in the revolution, who are not climate deniers. And so our hope is that Vineyard Wind holds up. We have to obviously work out agreements with the fishermen, so it's done in a way that's compatible with the fishing industry. We should have two big industries off our coastline, fishing and wind, and we can do it. We just have to work together to partner to accomplish that goal. So this is kind of the moment, and you know this permitting process can be completed, right? If you put people of goodwill at the table. And that first 800, we would have been really the first state to really have a major project. Rhode Island has like a 30-megawatt plant, but this 800-megawatt plant, and Vineyard Wind right behind it, they were, they were all willing to just move and move rapidly. And with it, I think the total, it's something like the total electricity generating capacity in New England is something like 30,000 megawatts for the whole of New England on a daily basis, and you only need like 22,000 of it, you know, to be active. Well, just wind alone could be 10,000 off of our coastline, right? So much less the solar on roofs or on city and town dumps, or, you know, energy efficiency reducing our consumption. So all of this is doable, okay? It's, and again, it's not rocket science. It's just getting the permitting right, getting the tax incentives right, and then allowing for the cost, the cost effectiveness to just plummet. I mean, the price of wind and solar has just collapsed in the last 10 years, and that's the scariest thing to the oil and gas companies. They know that they held it back for 30 years, that if we had started 30 years ago, it would be all over. And they are with Trump because it's his principal source of dark money, the fossil fuel industry, that that's who he is beholden to, and that's why this election is so important for us to play. So thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. Yes, everyone?
Hello, Senator. My name is Alex Chatfield. I live in Lincoln, Mass. And my question relates to the topic that you were just talking about, and that is how crazy it seems to be that we are now continuing to build new fossil fuel infrastructure here in Massachusetts when what we need is a moratorium. So I wonder if you could speak to the tragedy that is unfolding in Weymouth, Mass. with the construction of the new compressor station, how the regulatory system is rigged in favor of the fossil fuel industry, and what you're doing personally to try to stop the Weymouth project?
Okay, good. So thank you. That's a very good question. So, so I went down to the compressor station in June with the mayor of Quincy. It's a, it's a Quincy Brain 3 Cohasset issue, so I brought all the electives there to the site, and it's just this very small, very, very small geographic area, right on the Atlantic Ocean, that is actually a dangerous place to put a facility such as this. It's not isolated at all. And, and what I did then was to organize around them and the three communities, to have my staff do the research, so that we would, it would be ultimately very clear that the principal goal of the company is to take the natural gas compressor and then push the natural gas through it, and then try to build an export facility up in Fortland Main, and then send the natural gas as LNG off to China and other places in the world, with all the environmental risks being run right there in those communities, huh? And the question that I forced them to answer, and Mara Healy does great work on this issue, was, "Do you need this additional natural gas to serve the people of Massachusetts?" Because I wanted to get right to the export question part of this issue, and ultimately, they had to answer, "No." The state agencies, "We do not need it for our own citizens." So I am continuing to battle this, because ultimately, they just want to use Massachusetts almost like a straw, you know, through which they'll send the natural gas, you know, that ultimately gets cryogenically, you know, frozen and then sent off to the rest of the world. Well, that's not, that's not sending off iPhones around the rest of the world. That's participating in a perpetuation of these industries and using, by the way, the FERC and other agencies, which are traditionally west of the Mississippi agencies, you know? We only have one person on the FERC east of the Mississippi. She happens to be a woman, actually, from Framingham, just really great. But ultimately, we need to understand these issues better, to see where, whether it be petrochemical industry, plastics, whether it be that compressor station, where we can see all the places where the fossil fuel industry uses these agencies to just continue to increase their profits, but at the expense of the environment and the long-term, long-term well-being of the people of Massachusetts. Excellent question. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Before we have any questions, Jim, we want to call two more people down just to make efficient use of time. So we'd like to call down Andrew and Chris Lee.
I'm Jim Snyder Grant from Acton. So clearly, Acton has a lot of people who care about the climate emergency, so I'm wondering, what's the most urgent thing for us to do at the town level? I mean, in addition to having, declaring a climate emergency, what are the practical steps that the town can take to be as helpful as possible as quickly as possible?
Well, I, I think it would be great, and I know the town manager is here, so, but I, I think that, I think actually, each community in Massachusetts is given an opportunity to have its own Green New Deal, to bring in the young people, have everyone talk about, "How can we go to the maximum level, you know, of energy efficiency, renewables, or, you know, recyclables, whatever, in the shortest possible period of time?" The Situate hired one of my former staffers about eight years ago, and so she's the town manager there, and she decided that she was going to make Situate the first community to be 100% renewables, and they did it, okay? So they can make that announcement. Now, they're right on the coastline, and every time there's a big storm, Channel 5 and 4 and 7, they go right to Situate to see, you know, the waves coming over and blasting those homes. But will is a will, is a way, and each community can use their own unique way of trying to prove that there are breakthroughs that can be made that then can be used in the next community over, in the, in the next state over, and then the next country over. So, so that's what I would urge you to do, try to put together those kind of coalitions to do it in a collaborative fashion, but always trying to be at the cutting edge. And so that would be my recommendation to you, but include the young people especially, okay? Because I think they're going to have a lot of great ideas about what you can do. Thank you. Question? Yes, sir. Can you move up the microphone? Could you identify yourself?
Hi, my name is Ariam Devitt, and I'm from Lexington, Massachusetts.
You're from Lexington?
And I'm part of the Sunrise Movement, and my question is, and my question is, that when we get all these EV vehicles and solar panels and initiate the Green New Deal, obviously they'll save initially, but in the time that we have to, like, in the time that we have to pay more taxes, our profits will probably, like, lower, how will that, like, how will that affect the income rate of Massachusetts and the nation, and like, how will it help initially?
How, so you're asking, can just re- rephrase the question one more time. Put the microphone in closer, please. Go ahead.
Um, how, in the time that it takes to initiate the Green New Deal, get electric vehicles and solar panels, et cetera, how long, how will it affect the profit of working citizens and how will it affect the economy?
Ah, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. Yeah. Well, here's, here's the beauty of, let's just say, moving to a more efficient lightbulb. It's a little more expensive upfront, but over the life of the lightbulb, you actually save money on electricity. Here's the beauty of a plug-in hybrid or an all-electric vehicle. Might cost a little bit more upfront, although this is before, of course, we're selling four or five million a year, where the price is just going to collapse, but in the early days, but over the life of the vehicle, you save that money back on the oil, the gasoline that you never had to purchase, huh? So a lot of this is kind of consumer education, that we have to do a better job of just explaining to people, like my mother, you have to work smarter and not harder. So getting these technologies upfront that might cost a little bit more, in the end, ultimately save people. And we also have to explain that across the planet, and here, we have a public health crisis. In the summers, emergency rooms are flooded with asthma cases, especially amongst young people. I mean, we absolutely have an epidemic on the planet. And in India and China and other places, it's like the number-one result of all of this pollution that we put up into the atmosphere, the additional diseases, you know, which we are causing, the misspelling of the Endricon system, of the, of the genes that we have, especially amongst young people in our society. That cost is never really built into the price of having fossil fuels be up into the atmosphere. So when I was your age, and I still live in Malden, I still live in the same house, I still live four blocks from the Malden River. Well, the Malden River, when I was growing up, it was purple, had a little purple haze on it. And my mother said, "Whatever you do, Eddie, do not swim in the Malden River," because the coal companies, the chemical companies, they were just using it as a dumping ground, huh? And of course, they were saying, "Well, you don't want consumers to have to pay the extra price for all the things that we're making." But of course, there was a price being paid, and I'm sure that there are people who lived even closer to that river who have paid the price with their health, with the impact that it had upon them. So a big part of our responsibility is to explain, in the long run, how much we're going to save just because of the public health that we're benefiting, and that your family and every other family will be a beneficiary of it. I'll give you, my wife, I went to the Immaculate Conception Grammar School, Malden Catholic, Boston College, Boston College Law School. I was a commuter to B.C., B.C. Law School. The first lawyer I ever met was the first law professor that worked in my classroom. And then 35 years ago, I was looking for a wife, and I married the dream. I married a Jewish doctor, okay? So, and not only was she a Jewish doctor, but she had joined the public health service right after finishing at the Kennedy School. So she's a doctor and a Kennedy School graduate, and she's in public. So we're having our first date, and this is 35 years ago, so here's what she tells me, very interesting, very interesting. Japanese women contract breast cancer at one-quarter of the rate of American women. One-quarter of the rate. However, Japanese women contract breast cancer at the same rate as American women in the first generation that a Japanese woman lives in the United States, meaning that it's not in their genes, it's in something we do to ourselves, chemicals, air, water, right? Because it's not the genes. We already know what the test is for a Japanese woman. So why are we so much higher? Well, it's probably a lot of these things that a lot of people say, "Well, it's too expensive to protect people from that. Too expensive to build those additional costs in." But in the long run, families pay the price. And she was obsessed with this because her mother had died from breast cancer, right? And she always wondered, "What's going on here?" And ultimately, she became a two-star admiral and the first deputy assistant secretary for women's health in American history, and she was able to convince Hillary to go with her to NASA and the Pentagon and to the CIA and have them give over their 3D technologies, which reinvented breast cancer detection in the 1990s. She did that, so you could find it earlier, right? So in America, right? So you could do something like that. So in a lot of, in a lot of areas, again, if we work smarter and not harder, we actually benefit people. So that's part of our, that's part of kind of your generation's job, too, is to educate people who just kind of accept the smokestacks, which is how my neighborhood was growing up. Every Converse All-Star in the world was made two blocks, three blocks from my house, right on the Malden River, and God knows what went into the Malden River with all that rubber, huh? God knows. So we need just to do a better job, and plastics is right upfront now, we finally have more and more attention on that, and people are going to say, "Oh, it's going to cost too much. We should just have those single-use plastic bags and not worry about it," right? Just live with it. But the consequences for our oceans, for, for our healthcare is absolutely dramatic. So, so that would be my answer. In the end, it's going to wind up being less expensive for every family in the United States. And for many of these technologies, like a 50-inch HD screen that cost $5,000 about five years ago, people are walking out on Christmas now, you know, and Hanukkah with these screens that are now down to 700 bucks, 500 bucks, because we decided that we were going to go ultimately mass-market, and when you do it, the same thing will be true for solar and wind and all-electric vehicles and for batteries, and it will ultimately be less expensive for the families in the long term without the external risk of the health effects for their families. But thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. So, so we'll take, we'll just take, we'll take like three more questions. One, one, and then we'll have two more people come up with their questions. Yes, please. Senator, we're just going to call people up to make sure. Kathleen West and Marilyn Cugini. Okay, beautiful. Thank you. Kathleen West and Marilyn Cugini.
Kathleen Les and Marilyn Cugini.
Yes, please, sir.
Senator, thank you for coming back to Acton. If you recall, I came back to APAC back in April. I appreciate you coming. So my question relates back to the tax incentives to, for much of cars.
Say it again.
Back to tax incentives.
Tax incentives, yes.
So one of the issues that I was concerned was, how do we get these tax incentives back? I mean, you talked about you're trying to, you know, get all the Democrats back, but, you know, that may not happen. But the real question to think about is, how do you make it, tax incentives equitable to the coal miners in Kentucky, right? How do you make it, make the incentives work for them? Then you may actually have a broader support.
Okay, so that's a great question. So I'm going to take you into the Wayback Machine again, 2009, Henry Waxman and I, Jewish from L.A., Irish from Boston, liberals, we have to construct the Waxman Markey Bill, 1,400 pages, an 80% reduction in greenhouse gases. But we have the coal miners. How are we going to handle the coal miners? So here's what we did. We built into that law a guarantee of three years unemployment benefits paid for by the federal taxpayer. Three years healthcare, job training, and actually, we built in a couple hundred million, a couple hundred billion dollars for carbon capture and sequestration to say, "We'll try to make coal compatible." And so, and we worked hard with the United Mine Workers. What do you need? What would you want in here? And at that point in 2009, there were 80,000 coal miners in the United States. We got it passed and went over to the Senate, and PBD Coal, Arch Coal, and Alpha Coal, the companies, and you know who these guys are, Murray Energy. They go to McConnell, they kill the bill. Well, here's where we are today. We're up to 350,000 employees in the wind and solar industry over the last 10 years, and they're down to 50,000 coal miners, 50,000 coal miners. Guess what, though? No pension, no healthcare, no unemployment benefits. And the three companies have all declared bankruptcy, and they never cared about their workers in the first place because they were always fighting the black loan laws, they were always fighting the pension laws. We just actually had to pass a pension bill at the end of December of 2019 for many of these, many of these retired miners. So whatever we do, we have to have, it's not just a transition, it has to be a just transition. So we have to look at those workers in the existing industries and make sure that we're fair to them, and make sure we help them with their healthcare, help them with their, with their, with their, the pay they need for their families, and also put together strategies that are going to be moving jobs into their states to create the incentives for these new technologies to be constructed there. We can do this. Waxman Markey was an attempt at doing it, but they didn't want to hear it. And don't you wish that all those miners who lost their jobs to 30,000 got something which they didn't, because the coal companies didn't care? Those guys can protect themselves with bankruptcy, protect their fortunes, but ordinary families just get left behind. So it's a great question, and we actually, Alexandria and I, we made that very clear in the Green New Deal when we were announcing it, that that is part of our goal. It's to make sure that we're fair to the legacy industries as we're making this transition. But thank you for your question. Thank you. Yes.
Hi, my name's Betsy Garcia, and I live just five minutes down the road in Maynard. I see a bunch of people here from Maynard, so I'm excited for representing here. And I wholeheartedly support you in your reelection bid. I want to let you know. So, of course, we all hope that Trump gets convicted in the Senate, or at the very least doesn't win reelection. Also, very much that the Senate flips into Democratic majority. However, if one or both of those things do not happen, I would like, and I know that that's very, you know, pessimistic of you, but I'm also trying to be, you know, prepared and realistic, because it's a tough road. We have to pretty much run the board in the Senate, and a lot of people are very focused on the presidential election and not so much on the Senate. I want to know what you will do and what we should all be doing if one or both of those things do not happen in terms of advancing any progressive legislation such as the Green New Deal, Medicare for All. Are there things that we can actually work on with some maybe same-minded Republicans who might maintain a majority?
Okay, can I say this? For us, this is 1860. This is 1932. That's where we are. That's where we are. So I would say failure is not an option, and that we can win in Arizona, we can win in Iowa, we can win in North Carolina, we can win in Maine, we can win, we can win across the country. We just have to, not agonize, but organize. We just have to say, "This is our generational political responsibility to win the seats." I mean, that's just how I see it. And, and we will win, okay? I just think that the more he's doing, it's the more he's scaring those swing voters across our country, those people in suburbs that thought, "Well, there's really no difference between him and Hillary, or I'm just going to stay home, or I'm going to, you know, not really have a high energy level and go out there." You can see amongst young people, the turnout's doubling. It doubled in the off-year, 2017. The millennial vote, it doubled again in 2018. That's why Nancy Pelosi picked up 55 seats. So it's happening out there. We just have to make sure that it happens. Now, if it doesn't, excuse me?
Thank you, Bernie.
Yeah, right. But again, we need, we need everyone in on this. This is going to be a team game going forward because everything is on the line. And if, if we're unsuccessful, which I don't, I, see, it's hard for me to go there, okay? It's just hard because it's like going to the next stage before we've put everything we can into this stage. Yeah, we have to look at the filibuster, just, you know, to, we'll have to look at everything, see if we just eliminate it, right? But I, but I don't like to have the conversation because it basically concedes failure, basically concedes we're not going to do this, basically concedes saying we're not going to go up to New Hampshire from Acton and Stowe and Lincoln and ring doorbells to make sure Jeannie Shaheen wins and Trump doesn't get those four electoral college votes. It means we're not going to, we're not going to be going online to contribute to whoever is our nominee, whoever it is. And we're putting aside any difference, any differences because any one of our nominees is 100% better than Donald Trump as the president of the United States. And so that's how I view it, okay? So that's the, that's kind of our challenge, and it can be Elizabeth, it can be Bernie, it can be Joe Biden, it can be, it can be Yang, it can be anyone, okay? They're all better than Donald Trump. He is the existential threat to the planet, okay? So that's how I view it, buddy. I thank you so much for your energy that you're bringing here today. And over here, so we'll have one question over here, then the final question. Yes.
Hi, I'm Marilyn Cugini from Carolina, Massachusetts, and I, my question is, "How can citizens best persuade today's politicians to protect the environment? What are the most effective ways for us to get politicians' attention besides voting? Is it letters? Is it emails? Is it marches? Is it demonstrations? What is it? What is the most effective?"
Congress is a stimulus response institution, and there's nothing more stimulating than 10,000 young people all showing up on Boston City Hall Mall, you know, for the climate strike. It's like, "What is that? What is going on here, okay? I got to start to learn more about that issue." So this is happening all across the country, and it has to be this intergenerational, compact, young people and old partnering and out there using every one of the tools, online and in-person, you know, to lobby, to organize, to activate, okay, and to fully participate. We're at the maximum point of a need for participatory democracy in our country. It is not a year for sitting on the sidelines. This is the moment when we all have to lift our gaze to the constellation of possibilities for ourselves, our families, our state, our country, and our world. We have to just lift our gaze and understand that 80% of the world would take places with the people in this room so they could go out and ring doorbells to defeat Donald Trump. They would just say, "Please, let me come and do it, but if I can't become one of your citizens, please do it for us in China, in India, in South America, in Africa. Please go out and do this work." You have no idea what the consequences are going to be for our countries if that man stays in office. So I guess that would be my charge to you, that you just have to go out there and do the work. And this is our moment. This is the time, this is the place. We have to be the people. So thank you for your question. And last question, right over here. Last question. Yes, ma'am.
Naomi Klein and a bunch of other people are arguing that a meaningful response to climate crisis will involve not just technology and not just effective politics, but also a real change in capitalism as we know it here in this country, in this country. And that, for example, what you talked about with the coal miners, a, an economy that, I think we can all agree, that an economy that really does care about people would not allow coal companies to treat their miners like that. So I wonder what you think about that sort of general concept of, you know, and what you think about, how can we begin to alter our economy and make it a less harsh and cruel one?
You know, the old saying was that Franklin Delmar Roosevelt saved capitalism from itself, from itself, because you could see the worst, you know, impacts of, of an unregulated capitalism in our society. You know, my father, yeah, my father, you know, worked in factories growing up, eventually he was driving a truck for the Houdin Oil Company, but he would be in the kitchen like this with no finger here, and it would say, and we'd make fun of him, you know, my brothers and I. All three of us were born in the same year, one year. My mother had all three of us born, me and then the twins, all in 12 months. So we'd make fun of my, we'd make fun of my father, but, but he would go, "Eddie, that's what happens when you don't have an OSHA." My finger just got chopped off and nobody cared, huh? Nobody cared. So ultimately, it's up to us to put into place the humane policies to protect families, especially the most vulnerable. And here, let's be honest, black and brown people have always breathed different air than white people in our country. We know that. We know where they put the plants, we know where they put the filth, we know where they put the pollution. We all know that now, you know? And so it's this generation's responsibility to make capitalism more humane, to deal with the acknowledged anticipatory harm that's going to be done to certain segments of our society if we don't stop what we're doing. So that's our job, and that's what the Green New Deal is all about. That's why we actually talk about intersectionality. That's why we put frontline communities in the 14-page resolution. We want to talk about it, you know, and we want to talk about the inclusiveness, the job training, the education that we have to give to people. And so we could go off on a whole other subject like this, but one of the bills I've introduced in the last year, it's just dual enrollment. It just says that we're going to have free for our kids who are juniors in high schools that come from poorer areas, they can go to the community college for free and get credits, starting beginning in their junior year, because it's hard for them, being the first one in their family, to then make it through community college, 50% of them flunk out. So how do we put in place the programs for free that make it easier for these kids who are just as smart as the preceding generations of people who come from, you know, working class and poorer backgrounds to just make it through? It's not, it's not, it's not rocket science, okay? Just saying, "Let's just be smart about this. Let's protect these kids. Let's make it possible for them." The Malden that I grew up in, that Malden was mostly white, it was a black section of town, but there were Jewish, Irish, Italian, Protestant, right? We had like 5%, probably African-American, but that was it. Malden High School last year, you ready for this? 28% white, 25% Asian, 24% Latino, 23% black, the most diverse high school in the United States. Guess what? They're working just as the Haitian family in the two-decker across the street from me. I could, I can hear the Cambridge cab that one of them is driving pulling into the driveway at 1:00 in the morning. They're killing themselves, okay? And we just have to make sure that we deal with the fact that if we put the policies in place, they want to work hard, they want to take advantage of our country, but we have to invest in them. Those kids are our future. That is the 21st century. We are, homogeneity is the Trump message. Heterogeneity is our strength. Eat pluribus ruminum out of many, one. That is who we are, and if we put those policies in place, we're going to be greater in the 21st century than we are today. You can't make America great again by making America hate again. You have to make the investment in those kids. Green New Deal, income inequality, all of it. We can do it. It's on the ballot in 2020. Thank you all for everything that you're going to do to make sure that we win this election. Thank you all so, so much. Thank you. Thank you to Jamie. Thank you, Jamie. Thank you.